Next, we have a presentation by Epcor. They are coming to talk about water supply and other items. Welcome.
So, Mayor and Council, actually, this request came from Councilmember McMahon. She was concerned because there had been some, a lot of high-profile news recently about this, and actually, she kind of got on the cutting edge before it actually became much more out there. So, we're very fortunate, we reached out to Epcor. Chad Guzman's here, who is going to introduce the team with him tonight, who are going to speak on this. But, we're very appreciative. Doug, excuse me, Chad Guzman is the Government Relations Director with Epcor. He's been very responsive at any time we've ever had any requests for either troubleshooting issues or helping with these types of matters. He's been very responsive. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Guzman.
Yeah. Mayor Dickey, council members, thank you all so much for time on your busy agenda this evening. I'm quickly just going to introduce the two presenters from Epcor. First off, our Director of Operations, Frank Metzler, who many of you know personally, is going to give an operational update specific to the Chaparral Water System that serves water to the town of Fountain Hills, and some of the specifics around water demand and supply, specific to the Chaparral Water System. And then, our Manager of Water Resources, Doug Dunham, is going to give the broader water resources perspective for the state of Arizona, the drought contingency planning that has occurred over the past several years that he personally participated in with the Governor's Office and many of the other stakeholders around the state of Arizona. Doug has several decades of experience in water resources, working for the Department of Water Resources, one of the foremost experts on water policy and water resources in the state of Arizona, and he is a resident of the town of Fountain Hills as well. So, you know, with that, I'm going to hand it off to Frank first. I think we had a PowerPoint presentation as well, if it's...
It should be on the desktop.
There it is. Awesome, and thank you again for your time this evening.
Good evening. Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and Manager Miller. It's nice to see you all again. I just have a few, by the way, my name is Frank Metzler. I'm the Director of Operations for the Eastern Division of Epcor Water, Arizona, which includes Fountain Hills. I just have a few slides to share with you that provide an overview of where the water comes from for Fountain Hills, the different types of water, how much water we can, how much potable water we can produce for the town on any given day, and then, what demands we have seen historically, so you can understand the perspective between our capacity to produce water and the demands that we've seen. I just wanted to add that, for a water nerd like me, or for Doug Dunham, we've been working on this stuff since we got out of college. I was back at DWR back in the mid-'90s, talking about what would a shortage look like on the Colorado River, and how we would deal with it. So, I just want you to know that although there's a lot of talk in the media, and there's a lot of concerns about where we are right now on the Colorado River, there've been a lot of people who've worked hard on this subject for a long time, and we're in a pretty good place, and Doug seemed to go into that in greater detail than I will. You're going to hear a lot of numbers and facts, but the take-home message, if you don't remember anything else from our presentation, is that things aren't as grim as they sound in the media. All right? Now, let me see if I can figure out how to navigate this. All right. Okay. So, quick overview, here is a map of the, what we call the Chaparral Water System, which is essentially the Fountain Hills Water System. Just a couple of things to point out on this map. The majority of water for Fountain Hills comes off the Central Arizona Project, and if you look in the lower left-hand corner of this map, you'll see the blue line, which represents the Central Arizona Project, and you'll see our pumping station, where we pull water out of the canal. That water then makes about a three-mile trip in a pipeline up to our Shea Water Treatment Plant, which is a surface water treatment plant. From there, that water can be distributed throughout all of Fountain Hills. In addition to the Shea Surface Water Treatment Plant, we also have groundwater that's available for the customers here in Fountain Hills. There are two wells, Well 10, which is right by the fire station off of Palisades, and Well 11, which is out in the middle of one of the holes on the Saguaro Golf Course, which is a whole 'nother story. So, the point I wanted to make here is that Fountain Hills is not completely reliant on the water that comes from the Colorado River. We also have abundant groundwater that we can reach into and use, and we currently use here in Fountain Hills. All right. Time for the facts and the numbers. All right. How much water can Epcor make in Fountain Hills? The Shea Surface Water Treatment Plant has the ability to produce 15 million gallons a day, which is roughly 46 acre-feet per day. There are three separate treatment trains, each is capable of producing 5 million gallons a day, and if we were to have a problem with any one of those treatment trains, the other two would still be in fine operating order. In addition to the surface water treatment, as I mentioned before, we have wells 10 and 11. Those two wells combined, if they run full-tilt 24 hours a day, can produce 5 million gallons a day, roughly 15 acre-feet. And in addition, we also have two wells, which are currently inactive and not equipped, but within about a year's time, if we needed them, we can get them back up and running with the treatment that's required to produce an additional 2.4 million gallons per day of water. So, how much water can we make? Epcor can make about, right now, 20 million gallons a day of water, if everything were going full-speed. That's about 61 acre-feet. In addition to our potable water production, we have about 11 million gallons of storage distributed in above-ground steel tank reservoirs that are distributed throughout the community. All right. So, I gave you some facts on how much water we can make. How much water do we use out here? On an average day in Fountain Hills, we see about 5.6 million gallons of demand on the potable system. The highest demand that we saw last year, right at about this time of year last year, when it's about 115 degrees outside, is about 9 million gallons a day. So, remember, we can make about 20 million gallons a day, and the highest demand we've seen is about 9 million gallons last year. That annual demand for Fountain Hills last year totaled 6,305 acre-feet, and that's against an annual Central Arizona Project allocation of 8,909 acre-feet. So, you can see we're at about 2/3 of, our demand represents about 2/3 of the annual allotment from the Central Arizona Project. If we were to have problems with both of our groundwater wells, the Shea Surface Water Treatment Plant alone can handle all of the demand in Fountain Hills. On the flip side, if there were some sort of catastrophic failure at the Surface Water Treatment Plant, or if the Central Arizona Project were to run completely dry, right now, we can handle about 1/3 of all the days in a year with our groundwater production. But, as I mentioned before, we have two wells that are inactive, and if we ever got into a situation, and Doug is probably getting nervous that I talk about the CAP running dry, and Doug's going to tell you why that's not going to happen, if we had about a year's notice, we could have wells 8 and 9 back online and producing water, such that there would only be about four or five days of the total year, where demand might exceed our ability to produce that volume of water. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Doug, who will give you more facts and details. Unless there are any questions.
Yes, we have one.
Thanks for your presentation. You started out by saying, "Things are not as grim as the media makes it out to be." What are you doing to educate the media? I mean, this is scaring the hell out of people.
That's a fantastic question. How do you, I guess the way I would answer this question is that these are, these can be complicated technical issues, and sometimes, it takes a little effort to get your mind around the whole realm of how we make water, and where the water comes from, and how we get it to our customers, and some people who are talking about this issue have not armed themselves with all the facts. Now, I want to make sure, I'm not belittling or making light of the drought in the Colorado River Basin. It's severe, it's ongoing, and it looks to be continuing. The message I'm trying to convey is that we anticipated this might happen a long time ago, and a lot of people have worked hard since then to be ready for this day.
I don't, you know, you said these are technical issues. What you said to us so far this evening are not technical issues. If you got the information out there as to how many gallons per day, what the worst case was a year ago, those kinds of things, seems to me the press could share that with the public, so that it wouldn't be panic.
Well, I'm here tonight, we're here tonight to talk about this. I know that there's a member of the media from Fountain Hills who's in the back of the room. We'd be more than happy to work with the local media to get out the message that we're sharing with you this evening.
I would also say the Republic. To me, you ought to be sharing with the Republic as well. One other question I have is, where do we stand if there's a forest fire in the area?
So, we stand ready with the hydrants that are in the Fountain Hills System to provide assistance to both internal and external fire departments. We had a situation up in Anthem last year about this time, where we had assets from all over the state and federal assets that were using water from the Anthem System to help suppress a fire just south of Anthem. We're ready and open to provide water whenever it's needed to help with fire suppression.
Well, you said last year, the highest amount was 9 million gallons per day, correct?
Yes, sir.
What might it be if there were, if there were a forest fire? And if your maximum is 20 million, if you had a sizable fire, for example, in Fountain, around Fountain Hills, have you done any estimates as to what it would take to deal with it?
Yes. So, the fire hydrants and the pressures that we maintain in the system are coordinated with developers and with the fire department to ensure that we can deliver what's called minimum fire flow volumes anywhere in Fountain Hills if there's a fire. Now, when you get into wildfire and fires that are outside the borders of Fountain Hills, it gets more complicated. We've all seen some of these fires lately, and you can, I don't even know how much water they use to put those fires out. All I can tell you is that we'll do whatever we can, and we'll make as much water as we can, up to 20 million gallons a day, to help provide that water to suppress the fires.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I mean, I think it's fair to say with fire suppression, I mean, we've had a fair number of wildfires in the area, and, I mean, they're using helicopters that dip down into lakes all over the region, they use fire retardant, which isn't water, I mean, there's, you know, it's not like they're tapping into hydrants all the time and fighting fires. So, I think there's, you know, to your point, Alan, there's a lot of other issues involved that I don't think would be worthy of, you know, concern. A couple of questions. I was wondering, as far as the wells 8 and 9, I mean, what would, what would it take to trigger, you know, kind of bringing one or both of those back? I mean, a year is a pretty long time, so you'd have to know quite a bit, you know, ahead of time that that would be needed. I mean, what would it take to have Epcor do that?
So, the way this would work is that Doug, in his coordination with the Department of Water Resources and the Central Arizona Project, are constantly updating the models that tell them what the situation looks like on the river, and what levels are in Lake Mead, and when those various levels trigger different amounts of shortage. We would, I would sit down with Doug, and we'll talk about, if this drought continues and it gets more severe, all of these things are bureaucratic processes that involve the state and federal government, so a 12-month planning horizon on these kinds of issues is not an inordinate amount of time. And what we would do is, if it looked like we were going to get to a point where there was a concern about the volume of water that could be delivered to Fountain Hills, we would design and equip those two wells to treat for nitrates and arsenic, and put large enough pumps on them to make sure that they can produce the volume of water that we need for the community.
And you're pretty sure those wells are still viable in terms of being able to draw up water? I mean, if you haven't used them?
So, wells 8 and 9 were drilled at the same time as wells 10 and 11. They just don't have the equipment that we have on the other wells, and the reason why we don't go out and do that today is because if we spend that money, which would be millions of dollars, that immediately goes into rate base, and that's a cost for the customers here. So, we only want to do that if it looks like it's essential.
Right. I was reading, I don't know if it was this morning or yesterday, about, you know, there's kind of a new consortium of golf courses getting together, kind of pushing back to the state and whatnot, and, you know, and obviously, most of our courses out here use probably, what, a combination of effluent and potable, so do you have any idea on how they'd be affected, if at all? If, you know, if this were to continue to get worse?
So, once again, that's a fantastic question. It's a very politically sensitive question. My understanding, and I apologize, I'm not 100% certain, is that the golf courses in Fountain Hills do not rely on our potable water, that they have other sources, whether it's reclaimed or their own wells. So, I'm not ready to stick my neck into that fight right now.
Yeah, I don't blame you. And getting back to one of other, Alan's another point, I mean, I used to be in the media, so I'm not necessarily defending them, but, I mean, I think it's fair to say that, you know, maybe Epcor and Fountain Hills Chaparrals in a better position than a lot of other systems around the state? I mean, can you address that a little? I mean, it sounds like you got a good handle on this, but I'm sure there's other water systems that aren't and is, don't have the backup and the two sources, that kind of thing? You want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Well, I, once again, I don't want to steal Doug's thunder, but I can just tell you that there are, particularly if you're within an active management area, there have been tremendous obligations placed on municipalities to ensure that they can provide water to their communities, and so there are a lot of different water storage and recovery mechanisms that have been created, that Doug's going to talk about, that the people who live here have paid for, and they, and they have every right to call on those resources when we get into a time of need.
I was on a call a couple, probably three weeks ago, and Phoenix's, Maricopa County as a whole is more prepared than any western city. I heard they have like a 10-year supply of water that they haven't even tapped. So, we are well-prepared, I think, for what we see coming.
I believe so.
And maybe your partner can speak to that, too.
Thank you. That's exactly the question that I was going to ask about the timeframe for this, as far as the climate change that's going on and the high level of heat we're having in the summer. I mean, these figures look fantastic. Are you revisiting them every single six months or a year, or whatever? And how long is this projection? And I assume you adjust it?
Yes, we do. So, that's a perfect segue for me to hand this over to Doug. Unless there's anything else I can address. All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. For the record, my name is Doug Dunham, and I am the Water Resources Manager for Epcor USA. And as Chad mentioned earlier, I am a Fountain Hills resident as well, and I've been here about 26 years, so seen the town grow, and I kind of know Mayor Dickey and Michael pretty good, so nice to see some friendly faces here. I used to be the Legislative Liaison for the Department of Water Resources, so it's nice to get in a friendly crowd instead of down with the legislation.
Not yet.
True. So, just real quick, I thought I'd do just a quick overview of who we are. We have multiple systems across the Southwest. We are the largest private utility in the southwestern region of the United States, and so here's kind of an overview of our, all of our systems in Texas, New Mexico, and Arizona, and as you can see, in Arizona, we're pretty well-represented across both the Phoenix Metro area, as well as along the river itself. So, we have multiple systems across the state. So, I thought I would start off with kind of a real brief general overview of how water is regulated, how it works in Arizona, and then kind of drill down into what the state has done, and then specifically what Epcor has done, and I'll get into some more details of exactly the planning that we've gone through to ensure that Chaparral City, that Fountain Hills itself is well-positioned for these upcoming drought conditions that we're facing. And I think one of the large takeaways I want everybody to walk away with this evening with is, is we knew this was going to happen one day, we saw it coming, and we've spent decades planning for it. So, this is not something new, it's not a quick thing that's just jumped up at us, and we continue to plan to make sure that this is something that is manageable. So, the main sources of water in Arizona are groundwater, surface water, so that would be like the SRP system, Salt Verde River waters, and Colorado River water. Colorado River water, we usually break that up to the main stem system, so that's water use actually on the Colorado, so cities of Yuma and Bullhead City, and et cetera, and then the Central Arizona Project water that's brought into the central part of the state. And then, our only growing source of water is reclaim. So, I always like to show this graph, it's my favorite graph, on the water management success of Arizona. As you can see, the water use today is actually less than what we were using in 1957 on a statewide basis. So, this is a direct result of all the conservation programs the state of Arizona has put in place. You can see that our water use is actually 1% less than what we were using in 57, whereas our population has grown by over 500%, and our gross domestic product has increased by over 2,000%. So, you can put these programs in place, not harm yourself economically, and you can continue to move forward. And one of the other contrasts I'd like to show, to talk about with folks, too, is that Arizona has chosen to do the conservation programs behind the scenes. So, they tell the water provider, these are the goals you have to meet, and then the water provider knows their customers, knows their systems, and they can pursue how to implement these programs, instead of strictly a state-down, you have to reduce by a certain percent, like California tends to do. So, and the other thing I'd like to point out on this graph is, you can see the inflection point there on the actual demand number happened in 1980, and that was the year that the Groundwater Management Act was passed, and it was the year that the Department of Water Resources was created, and that's when all these conservation programs first started. So, generally speaking, the overview of the Groundwater Management Act is that it, first of all, it created the Department of Water Resources, and they are the water manager for the state of Arizona. The goals of the Groundwater Management Act were to control the severe groundwater depletion that was happening during the late '70s, and started in the '50s through the '60s. It provides a means to allocate Arizona's limited groundwater resources, it augments the groundwater supplies throughout the state, and then it preserves groundwater for use in times of drought. So, basically, we look at the groundwater as our savings account, and not to try to live off of that all the time, rely on your renewable supplies, but then when those get into drought issues, you can turn back to groundwater to help you through those dry periods. So, we happen to live in one of the five active management areas within the state that was created under the Groundwater Management Act, and there are certain requirements that have, that have, occur in those AMAs. The number one being the Assured Water Supply Program. I call it the crown jewel of the groundwater code. It's near and dear to my heart. I was the manager of that for like 15 years, and it's a really important program. What it does is it requires that any new development, any new growth in the AMAs has to show that you have a 100-year renewable water supply. This is required to be demonstrated before any lots can be recorded or sold, and the Chaparral City Water System is currently designated under this program for 100-year assured water supply. The other key program in the AMAs is the Recharge and Recovery Program. So, what we do is, we take renewable supplies, when we have that, we have extra supplies, we store that underground for later recovery when we need it in times of shortage. And another key program entity that was created was the Arizona Water Banking Authority, and what they do is, they go out and obtain extra supplies when available, store it, and then that is made available for any CAP water customer like ourselves in times of shortage. So, really quick, this Storage Recovery Program, it's been in existence since 1986. It's, again, additional drought insurance for us. To date, there have been over 3 trillion gallons of water stored in the state of Arizona. That's enough to serve the city of Phoenix for over 30 years. Waters that are stored are CAP water, reclaimed water, and then on an annual basis, you can store and recover surface water. A little more detail on the Arizona Water Banking Authority, it's housed within DWR, but it's a separate entity. This acts as an actual storer of supplies. A lot of other states have water banks, but they function more as a trading center between trading rights around. We actually take water and store it underground. It is supported by, you know, state funds, and it provides backup during the droughts, it provides some of the backup for some of the tribal settlements, and it also is the entity, we have interstate agreements with the state of Nevada, and we store some of their extra water here in the state of Arizona. Again, in times of drought, we will be, Nevada would pay us to recover that water, and then Arizona would leave some of our allocation for the state of Nevada to use in times of shortage. To date, they have stored over 4.4 billion acre-feet to back up supplies for CAP customers. Then lastly, I want to touch on CAP priorities. We have heard that there are shortages coming, and there's going to be some impacts to current CAP customers. Within the CAP system, there are different pools, and those pools are different priorities. So, the highest priority is the municipal and industrial pool. In total, Epcor has about 30,000 acre-feet of M&amp;I CAP water for our systems across the metro area. Of that, Chaparral City has 8,909 acre-feet of CAP allocation. So, then there's some of the lower priority pools, the non-Indian ag pool, the ag pool, and then the access pool. So, some of the shortage, shortages you'll be hearing about, that hits those three lower tiers, and not, does not touch any of the municipal provider highest priority pool. So, along with this planning, we also conduct a lot of conservation efforts. So, the company has, you can get on our website and order for assistance, we'll be glad to help you out. We have self-audit kits, we have interior low-flow retrofit kits, we have landscape watering guides, desert landscaping guides, leak detection assistance we offer, and we are rolling out a new billing system whereby customers can actually sign up, and you can link your mobile devices to that, and it can alert you if there's a bump in your water use, perhaps you've sprung a leak. So, that gives you a notice ahead of time, so it doesn't just surprise you on your bill. So, that's a voluntary program that the customers can sign up for as we, as we move ahead on our more advanced billing technology. Another thing I want to point out, too, is my, one of my employees, a water resources conservation expert, is actually going to be out here at our demonstration garden here in Fountain Hills in October and November, giving, partnering with some of the folks out here to give a series of demonstrations on conservation gardening and landscaping. So, look for that coming up. So, what the state of Arizona has done, looking forward, two years ago, there was a recognition that the levels of Lake Mead were continuing to drop. The levels of Lake Mead are the key driver of when shortages will be declared on the Colorado River. So, it's the elevation of the lake. The lower basin got together between, with the different states, and made an agreement to help manage the river, to try to conserve water, preserve it in the Lake Mead, to bolster those elevations. This also included the Republic of Mexico, because they are also part of the system and have water rights under the 1922 treaty. So, the DCP, the states agreed to take some additional cuts early on to preserve water in the, in the lake, to help forestall this potential shortages. Arizona and Nevada agreed to take additional early cuts. California, for the first time, agreed to take some cuts. Prior to this, they didn't have to take any cuts whatsoever. So, the conservation system, conservation programs basically fell into two categories. One system stores water in the lake, and then that would allow the storers to retain those credits, and then be able to tap into those later on when shortages occur, and then there's a payback provision to keep the water levels in the lake as much as possible. And then, there's also a system conservation program that was put in place, and this was put in place to help just keep water in the system, benefit for both the environment the environment and the lake levels themselves. Within Arizona, because we decide, we agreed to take those lower, those earlier cuts, some of the lower priority water users, primarily agricultural users, were going to take a hit where normally they wouldn't take it. So, there was a series of agreements within the state of Arizona to help offset those impacts. The biggest area that's going to get hit are the agricultural users in the Pinal Active Management Area, so the Casa Grande area. The higher priority CAP users, we still have excess water that is not directly tied to current existing demands. So, we agreed, and Epcor was the only private utility that participated in this, to provide some of that higher priority water that we're not using today to send to the Pinal folks through 2026. And in exchange for that, the Arizona Water Banking Authority already has water credits stored within the Maricopa County area, and they'll provide that back to offset anything that we send down to Pinal. So that keeps us whole. One of the big flexibilities with that is that we can only, we only have storage permits where we store our water in certain places. The Arizona Water Banking Authority has credits all over the county, so we can maximize our flexibility in being able to recall when we need to pull those credits back out of the ground. And then there was some federal funding that was also provided to help offset a lot of these programs as well. So, earlier, there was a question on how we keep an eye on developing conditions on the river. This is a, twice a year, I'm sorry, three times a year, the Bureau of Reclamation produces a projection. This is the most recent one that they produced in April, and then in August, the next projection study comes out. So this is the 24-month study, so it's a two-year projection out, and these are the probabilities of shortages on the river. So, if you look at calendar year 2021, we are already in a tier zero shortage, and most people don't know that. But we've planned for that, and it doesn't directly impact any of our customers. The projections for 2022 are that we will get into our first tier-one shortage. As we look out over time, you can see that some of these projections, there's higher probabilities of those shortages continuing, looking out into the future. And there are two sets of numbers within this graph. The dark black numbers are using the full historic record, going back in there over 100 years of Colorado River flows. The orange is called the stress test hydrology, is just using the most recent 20 years, and that's some of the most driest periods on record. So, we tend to try to look at that one, because it paints a worse picture than the full historical record. And so that's what we use to peg to our planning scenarios on what do we actually need to plan for to offset potential impacts. So, our specific activities that Epcor has been doing fall into this list here. So, we maximize the use of reclaimed water, so we store and recover everything that we can, that we produce. We maximize the use of our municipal and industrial CAP allocations, again, saving groundwater for later use. We are working with the Arizona Water Banking Authority on infrastructure to help in times when we actually start to need to recover water. We are continuing our conservation programs. We are partnering with other entities for available leases and exchanges for other, for water that's available. We are continually upgrading our well infrastructure, and then we are participating in the DCP offset program in exchange for credits in the Phoenix area. So, thought I would do another Chap City by the numbers, so kind of give you an idea of what our total planning demands are versus what we see our actual use. So our CAP allocation is 8,909 acre feet per year. A study we did with DWR a few years ago determined that there is 8,695 acre feet per year for 100 years of groundwater available in our footprint here in the Fountain Hills sub-basin. Our current designation of assured water supply is for 9,317 acre feet per year for 100 years. Total supplies available to us between those two sources is over 17,000 acre feet per year. We also have over 3,000, nearly 4,000 acre feet of long-term storage credits of CAP water that we've stored underground and are available for us to recover. So, the total supply available to us in any given year is a little over 21,000 acre feet per year. In 2020, again, our demand was 6,265 acre feet per year, or about 28% of the total supplies that are available to us today. Our designation is good through the year 2034, and the expected build-out demand in 2034 is a little over 9,000 acre feet a year. So our total supply portfolio far exceeds what we expect to grow into for the foreseeable future. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Doug, good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
So I can keep my pool for a while then, yet? I don't have to fill it in quite yet?
Yeah, I think that's a safe bet for a while.
Okay, awesome.
I think you can use some lake water or something to fill it, though.
There you go, yeah. Maybe you'll get some cheap water. Just on that slide with the 1957 comparison, I know you mentioned it was basically conservation, but wasn't a lot of that, you know, development, taking over agriculture land? I mean, wasn't that the hugest part of it, or?
There is a very large component of that is the urbanization of ag. An acre of houses uses, you know, less than half of the irrigation demands of an acre of cotton, for example. But with that said, there is a huge, huge change in urban demand. It's much, much lower than it used to be. All of our appliances are much more efficient, our, you know, the showerheads are low-flow, you know, all those kinds of things. For example, the city of Phoenix essentially is using the same volume of water that they have had used for the last, basically, 20 years. Tucson is experiencing the same phenomenon. So, it's, there's definitely a big ag conversion component, but the efficiency in the modern homes are much higher. And you also can think about some of the new development. If you think about the old style in central Phoenix, it took over former ag, they used flood irrigation. You just don't see that type of landscaping, that type of building in the newer developments. So, it all helps.
Comment, if you will, California's drawing from Lake Mead. What impact will desalination have on their draw, if you know? I know it's costly to get that done nowadays, but is there anything on the horizon that would change that?
Yeah, actually, actually, there is. The technologies for DSal have greatly improved. The energy requirements are continually going down, and the filter media is much more efficient than it used to be. It's really not that much more expensive than normal water treatment. There have been some studies at some of the new, if you look at the total cost of, on a per-gallon basis, what it costs a provider like us to treat surface water, drinking water standards, it's not that much more expensive to treat seawater for the same drinking water levels. California is pursuing additional DSal locations along their coast. A large plant just recently opened in San Diego and providing water. And the state of Arizona and the state of Sonora are currently negotiating and working on co-location projects with, on the upper Sea of Cortez in the Republic of the Gulf, in Mexico. And that would be a joint project between the, both federal governments as well as the two states. And the, there's a whole commission set up to pursue this. So I suspect that that will be a project that would be a regional program, project in the next, you know, 20 to 30 years.
Would it be incorrect to characterize your presentations as a good news story?
I would like to say, think that's a good news story.
I'm going to beat a dead horse. Turn on the TV, I see Lake Mead with no water. I hear all these stories about the Colorado River. I read stories in the Republic especially about how everything's going dry and we've got major problems. What are we going to do? Woe is me. I think you have an obligation, a real obligation, to get the facts out, whether it's to sit down with the media, brief the media, whatever you have to do. But I know a lot of the press doesn't like good news stories, but with everything we're hearing, it's not pleasant, and people get upset by it, including my own wife, says, "What are we going to do?" I find this information stunning. I'm really pleasantly surprised by it. I just urge you to get the word out. Do whatever you have to do.
Mayor Dickey, Councilmember Maggie, I wanted to kind of address that quickly. Our public affairs and media relations team certainly, you know, is doing the work to try and arm the media with facts and arm stakeholders throughout the state with facts on this issue. As stewards of, you know, Arizona's most precious natural resource, we do have an obligation to step up and be a part of that. We're one voice of a chorus of voices that needs to speak out on a matter of statewide concern, but we are committed to doing our part.
I think we run into that because, first of all, it's complicated, and good to see you. You're DEQ, DWR buddies there. But, again, there are parts of the state that have, you know, more issues, and then so we're hearing about, you know, Chaparral and Epcor, and we really appreciate it. When you mentioned the desalinization, so are they still doing that in Yuma? Or are they still looking at doing, of setting some kind of a plant up there? Is that what you meant?
The Yuma Desalter is constructed, it's Bureau of Reclamation. Its primary job was to lower the saline content of the lower Colorado as required under the 1944 treaty with Mexico. It's only run a few times. It's really old technology, rickety. I think the last I heard from Reclamation, they could run it maybe a year, maybe two, and then the filter media would be shot, and it's not manufactured anymore. So, California's looking for specific potable DSal sites, and in the Mexico site would be a potable supply as well. So, there is, the salinity management programs have been pretty successful, so the Desalter hasn't needed to be run for that. There is some thought, if the drought continues, that it might be worth it to at least buy us that supply, you know, to offset some of the demands that the Desalter could use, and it might be worth to run it for the year or two that we could get out of it, and then we'd have to look at something else. But it hasn't, that's still one of the many tools out there that they're still thinking about.
Okay, thank you. And then, I forgot, looking at your map, do you operate in Gila County?
No.
Okay.
No.
So are they, you know, it's been a while, do they still have any kind of restrictions on home building or developments up there, or they've kind of, I know they had a new water board there, and they were able to make some progress, and I didn't, I was, because again, there are some parts of the state probably that are still looking at issues like that, and I wondered about them.
Yeah, I don't know what specific systems up there you're referring to, but yeah, there are a lot of areas of the state that are 100% groundwater-dependent, that don't really have the redundancy that we have here. And the groundwater reserves in some of the areas are much smaller. So it's, it can be a, it can be a challenge. You know, there can be areas, even within our Maricopa County, where you've got development that's happened with, without a central provider, unexempt wells, you know, each individual has their own well or they're hauling water, and those areas can be stressed pretty quickly if there's under drought conditions.
And last, I guess, some of those areas have developers then looking at different ways of using water and able to get more homes built or whatever, if they recycle or do some other things. But it sounds to me, from what Alan said and from what you're presenting to us, that we're well taken care of, and I'm not surprised that you were looking into the future. We live in a desert, obviously, and we're really, really happy that you were able to come and present to us and give us all this good information. And we can all kind of be ambassadors about it, too, and get the word out. And does anybody have any other questions? Greedy, you have anything?
No, we really appreciate the team coming tonight, though. This was very enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to do it.
Thank you.